I pledge this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, indivisible, the redeemed and justice for all.
I hope you can hear us. These fans make it difficult so far. If you can't hear us even like, please let us know. That was worth us to shout. I'm already seeing people like looking at you like I can't hear you. But we'll try our best, I promise, on our playground voices. I would hate to turn these fans off.
Okay, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was passed to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meetings of the public bodies by which any business affected their interest can discuss and act upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, Rockaway Township Board of Education has caused notice of the date, time, and place of said meetings. They have published in the Daily Record, Star Ledger, and have been posted in all schools in the district, in the municipal building of the township, and the township library. Ladies, may I ask you just to stop that for one minute, please? Girls, one minute, please? Thank you. Does any board member wish to object to the conduct of this meeting for the purpose of stating the public notice?
So I want to now, I am just...
I can't hear you, so you want to come out?
So, babe, this is my last meeting. And this has always been a question I've had since being on the board for six years and being in the audience for four years. If somebody says no, what happens? I always wanted to say no, just to find out.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
So, I guess that if you object, we perhaps could find out the nature of your objection.
I really don't object. I just want to have the answer.
The attorney, we have exactly legal answer. And then I guess we could say the board vote. Very good of them.
No, I'd have to make something up.
Okay, you're good with it. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Now, wasn't the answer I wanted. I wanted something like fabulous.
All documentation that you also considered by the Board of Education as part of this agenda are available for public review and comment. Members of the public are invited to come to the Board of Education building on Green Lawn Road during the regular business hours of 8:00 AM to Port Mia Monday through Friday if they wish to inspect any of the reference items. Before we get to public discussion, we do have a presentation, but we actually have two presentations, and I'm going to go first. A few weeks ago, Rochebala called me with news that was upsetting to me and many others, although we're happy for her. And she is temporarily relocating to New Mexico for work. We're just not sure when she's leaving. And so, when we heard that, we didn't know if tonight would be her last meeting or if it would be September 26th, the last one. And I could not, under the board, let Ro leave without being recognized for everything she has done for our district. So, Ro, I know you get emotional, but would you meet me in a little winky face? What if I say no to that? Then I'm coming over to you. I've tried to read you this speech at least ten times and it never comes out the same. So, I'm just going to let it go. It has been an absolute pleasure working with you all these years on the board. You are someone who, and we always say this about you, and you know it, you wear your heart on your sleeve. You always do. You always have to. And no matter where you are, you will do what's best for kids. And you fight for right, you stand up for what's right. And my goodness, what an asset you have been. To do that, then, I guess we have to let you go. But, I'm going to open this for you. Because I look at you as being able to bring in all the perspectives, analyze them, and then make a decision. And so, what we've done is created a glass plaque that's inscribed, that's a prism, that captures all the light around it. Because that's exactly what we've always done. I'm not saying it's much, but it's so true, okay? I would like to read to you what we've done. My computer's here. "Ro Chabala, in appreciation for your endless passion and commitment to our children. Rockaway Township Board of Education, 2012 to 2018." So, Ro, we wish you all the best, but we are hoping for this too. Everybody knows I love fun speaking, so it will be short. And the reason why I'm really quick is because they put a camera. I don't like cameras either. So, I just pointed right at you. But, thank you all. You know, I've been in this district since whenever it seems like. You know, both my kids now, one's graduating out of high school, the other is just finishing up over a amount of pills. But it has been my pleasure, and I hope I have always tried to serve you. I've always tried to serve you well. I hope you felt that. I know sometimes decisions aren't always what everybody would like. But at the end of the day, I do do it from my heart. That's the only place I know how to do it from. And sometimes that gets me in trouble, and I always try to do what I feel is the best for not only just my kids, but for everybody else and the staff. You know, that's always been, again, my part. And, you know, from my days at Dwyer, just being a mom, it's head, and the staff, and the parents, and the kids. So, thank you very much for putting up the plate. I get in times of crying and depression.
Tonight, for our first pre-rituation of the new school year, I'd like to invite Ms. Mustandria, our Director of Special Education, to come forward to talk about exciting new development in our special education program this year.
Hi, everybody. Can everybody hear me? Because we're having a slight technical problem, and our, the remote's not working. So, we're going to be... Hello? Okay. That'll be great. Thank you. So, I'm here tonight to talk about a product that we just purchased for our special education department. It's called Funtronic, and it's an interactive display, a projector, interactive projector. First, before I even show you what it is, I wanted to thank Chris Graeber, who is our Director of Technology. I don't know if every district has a technology department that feels like they're partnering with special ed department. But Chris actually came to me. I had never even heard of this product before. He came to me because he knew about it. He was excited about it. Brought the rep in to demonstrate it to us. Believed in it so much that he used his own funds to purchase it. That's how much behind it he was. So, I am very grateful for his forward thinking because this is something that in Europe is happening quite a bit. There are several countries that are using it in their schools, and I'll talk a little bit more about it. But in the United States, there aren't that many. In fact, we're the first district in New Jersey that has installed one. So, we're very, very excited. First, before I explain how we're using it, I want to just kind of give you a sneak peek of... This is the first video. This is Funtronic in its most simple form, just to give you a sense of what it's about. So, that's the general concept of what Funtronic is. In Europe, as I said, there are 5,000 different places that it's being used right now. And one way that they've been using it, that I'm going to show you next, just very briefly on the next slide, is how it has been used in classrooms to integrate movement into the curriculum. So, next slide. Hold on one second. Go ahead. Thank you. Okay, so, this is how it's been used. So, the general idea is that it's an interactive projector, but people are using it differently than you might find at the mall, basically. So, now, in Europe, like I said, there are 5,000 different locations. It's being used in hospitals, in schools, in therapy centers. There is a family, an American family, that has a child. We can go to the next slide. I'm sorry. The Bohrhills. They have a daughter Paige, who is 12 years old and is disabled. And they've been traveling all over the world looking for doctors, therapies, anything that they can figure out that will reach Paige. They came across this Funtronic system in Europe when they were there. Paige responded so well to it that they were fortunate enough to be able to purchase two. They bought one for their home, and they bought one for their daughter's school. They have seen such great results with her that they wanted to bring it to the United States. In addition to them feeling that she is enjoying therapy more, she's engaged more, they're also seeing improvements in her range of motion as a result of what they're seeing. Here's the next slide. So, this is what we're very excited about, and this is what we are bringing to Rockaway. I'm going to show you a few short clips of what's happening with Paige in her therapy sessions that we're hoping we'll be able to start seeing in our own buildings. So, obviously, we can see the benefits that it's having for Paige here. I wish, but we don't have two hours. There's a Facebook page that Funtronic has that is primarily... The videos right now are of Paige. But when I saw the earlier videos, I was like, well, is the therapist moving her hand for... Like, I wasn't sure how well it was working. And as you see time go by, you see there, like, she moved her hands by herself. There is absolute progress. And so, those videos get me excited about the possibilities for here. What got me more excited is that I presented this to our occupational and physical therapists, and the excitement in the room was palpable. Like, I was taken aback at how excited they were. They were standing behind me, and I could hear them all start talking to each other and calling out different things that they'd be able to address with that. I'm just going to go through. This is what the system looks like if it's hanging in the classroom. It's on the ceiling. There's a motion sensor. The teacher has a remote control. So, these are just a few of the things that therapists were calling out in excitement. Crossing the midline, eye-hand coordination, weight bearing, motor planning, strengthening, ocular motor control, body awareness, reciprocal playing, social skills, postural control, collaboration, timing, sequencing, balance. That was just in four minutes. So, I left that room very, very excited to have the product in our schools. Next. Okay. What does this mean for our students? So, right now, we have two Funtronic systems. One is a KDM, and one is a DBO. The one in KDM is going to be in the OTP room, and DBO will be the same thing. At this point, we feel like that's going to reach the greatest number of students because in KDM, we have our autism and multiple disabled classes, and at DBO, we have our preschool disabled classes. I'm excited to be putting it in the OTP rooms because, as you can see, I think that this can reach many more children on any range of needs that are going to OTP. Children that are in a resource room are still needing these skills. Students that are fully mainstream but getting OT and PT are going to be able to work on skills. So, that's where, that's the students that we're going to be reaching right now with these two systems. How will we know if it's working? So, the tough thing is that with any goals and objectives, they're individualized. So, there's not a, this isn't a product that it's one skill. We're going to work on a skill. We're going to be able to show that that worked. What we're going to be doing is having the OTs and PTs start documenting, recording the data on specific skills that they're addressing with this product. This is another tool in the toolbox, I think a very exciting one, that I think, like I said, I know they're excited about because I think they're going to be able to integrate quite a bit. So, we're going to be collecting that data throughout the year. What I would love is to come back at the end of the year and be showing some video of our own students, and to have some of our OTs and PTs here to talk about their experience. But just wanted to share this and tell you that we are very excited to get it started. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mustandria, for sharing this with us today, but also for your efforts in looking at all of our programs and how we can enhance them. And we are looking forward to your return with the therapists to provide the type of feedback that I'm sure that they are anxious to see occur. So, we'll look at for later in this new year, for sure.
Moving on then, public discussion. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address, and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operations of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if need appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws in New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those effects that are identified in the comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for the comments. I do see a lot of people who perhaps are new to the board meeting. This is the opportunity for public discussion on any items of concern, or questions about the agenda in general. At the end of each section on the agenda, except for personnel, we also provide opportunity for public input on those specific items before we take the board vote. And at the end of the meeting, we also have, once again, opportunity for public discussion for any comments or questions from the public. So, that's how the meeting runs. And in order to make this happen, first, let me say good evening. Thank you for coming, and I'd like to now have a motion to open it up to the public. So, Ro, Mrs. Mezak, please. Oh, that's much better. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Please come on up and just state your name and address, please.
Amy Malatest, 22 Navajo. I was just wondering if we could get an update as to the GNT program at Copeland, and if it's something that's going to be up and running this year, or is this kind of a prep year for years to come?
Thank you. Thank you. Please do.
Is this on?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for your question. Yes, I can assure you services will be provided. GNT services will be provided at Copeland this year, up and running. We will also be providing updates in the coming months about revisions to the curriculum and to the resources. But the resources will be provided this year, in grade 6, 7, and 8.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come on up.
Philip Marcha, 200 roads. As you know, federal tax laws changed dramatically this year, and one part have a major impact on school boards, which is the offsetting of state and local taxes against federal taxes. Having said that, the pattern has been in past years. You cover budget, and next year you add close to 2%. And the year after, close to another 2%, and it keeps going up, close to 2%. Given that I'm already over $10,000 on local taxes alone, I'm sure lots of other members of this community are in the same boat. What is this school board going to be doing to take a look at the budget decisions anywhere, anywhere structured, the assumptions under which is set up, to try and bring taxes down? Because if you don't, next year, I could choose that, then, even lower benefit from my federal taxes, and again, it's just going to go up.
Thank you. At this time, we're not going to respond specifically. However, thank you for the information, and I can assure you that the budget process is starting very soon, and it takes about six months for it to truly evolve. You have our commitment that we do our very best to keep it to the minimum, yet not interfere with what children need. But please, give us some time, and you'll find out more information as we go on about the budget. So, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, then, let me close this portion. May I have a motion to close this portion of the public room? Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico? Moving on to communications. Have there been any additional?
No, there are none.
Thank you. Moving on to approve the minutes, September 5th. May I have a motion, please?
No, please.
Mrs. Cherico?
Second.
Mrs. Hallward? Someone? Okay. Board discussion. I'm sorry. We were getting to the... I had to have a motion first to open it up. And now, we see approve the minutes of September 5th. Board discussion. Would someone like to have a discussion?
Right. We need to amend the date.
Thank you. I'm assuming it would be 29th August, correct?
Be 29th.
So, with that amendment to the original motion? Any other board discussion? Ro, call then.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabala?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallward?
Yes.
Mrs. Melunizan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Salman?
Yes.
Moving on to superintendent report.
Thank you. Good evening. Before presenting my formal report, I would like to provide, as required each year, our student data system statistics. This is for the 2017-2018 school year. Each of these are categories that are required to be reported on. One is violence, one is vandalism, one is weapons, and one is substance abuse. We had a total of, a grand total of 60 incidents, which consisted of one fight, 59 reports of HIV, 18 of which were confirmed, and 41 of which were alleged but not confirmed. And that completes the safety data system report, and that will also be posted on our school website under that particular area so that the public may access that. Yesterday, we commenced the 2018-2019 school year, and we were truly happy to welcome our students back to our schools. It was the first of 180 precious opportunities to engage our students along the path of learning. We look forward to maximizing each moment of these opportunities with our students with intention and with purpose during the upcoming school year. Last Friday, our anti-bullying specialist principals and assistant principals engaged in a full-day training with David Nash. David Nash is considered to be one of the foremost experts in our state regarding the HIV process. And as a group, we examined our practices, and we analyzed cases that have occurred throughout the state of New Jersey in an effort to hone our knowledge and skills in this critically important area. September is set aside as suicide prevention month. Schools, including our own, have been impacted by this increasingly tragic occurrence. Sadly, stigma about suicide and mental health challenges, lack of access to care, or lack of knowledge about the symptoms prevent too many from seeking the lifesaving help that is available. Throughout the month of September, the school district will continue to raise awareness and provide resources to our students and to our community, not as a one-time effort, but as part of a continued focus on behalf of our students. Tonight, we welcomed Ms. Mustandria, who provided a presentation regarding an innovative technology addition to our special ed offerings. And it is our intent, at each board meeting when practical, to include a presentation to the board that will highlight developments of our work with students or to celebrate our students and our staff. I've forwarded a copy of the presentation calendar as it presently stands. I've forwarded a copy of the presentation calendar as it presently stands with the members of the board, and updates as the year progresses will be rightly provided. On September the 26th, our next board meeting, we will be recognizing our custodians and our maintenance department members, for all their efforts that occurred in readying our schools over the summer months. During the month of September, we invite all parents of our students to join us at back-to-school nights. Back-to-school nights provide parents with an introduction to the school year, an overview of procedures, and an insight into the year's content and curriculum. The theme of our year is "Working Together Is Success." There is no better exemplification of this theme than that of a parent-school partnership. When parents and schools work together, everything is possible for our students. Please join us on back-to-school nights for the first step of this partnership through the 2018-19 school year. The dates for each school have been posted on our website. And that completes my report.
Thank you.
Just a question regarding the safety data. For the category of violence and fight, can you describe what is considered a fight in terms of this data?
A fight is, in terms of this data, is any kind of physical interaction between students, and there's a range of what a fight could be. And our discipline, our code of conduct, addresses the severity of what a fight would be, but even a simple interaction that results in a minor infraction would still be considered a fight as it's recorded on this data.
So, wine is for the...
That was for the full school year, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to the business strategy report.
I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to the curriculum report.
Good evening, thank you Madam Chair, Dr. McGlaughlin, and all of the board members and community members. I'd like to begin by echoing Dr. McGlaughlin's excitement about the start of this school year, and also a sincere appreciation to all of our teachers and principals and leaders who worked tirelessly throughout the summer, and especially this past week, to ensure for a very smooth school opening this past week. To begin my report, I'm pleased to share that we will be continuing our partnership with the Montclair State University Network for Educational Renewal this school year. It's a program to provide professional development opportunities for our teachers throughout the school year. This past week, I met with our district coordinator Gina Parisi to learn more about our partnership with the Montclair State University's Educational Renewal Program. In recent years, the majority of our teachers who participated are from our Catherine Dwyer School. Gina and I discussed ways we can expand these professional development opportunities in other, in more of our schools, by Gina presenting at faculty meetings during the month of September about this opportunity to spread the word about these professional development opportunities. Currently, amongst our teachers, we have forty-three faculty members who are certified and considered clinical faculty members, which means they have the opportunity to apply for $1,000 study grants annually, as well as $200 incentive grants. And just this past year, we had two teachers who were awarded study grants, and five teachers who were awarded incentive grants. We also had six teachers attend the summer conference. Teachers can be certified as clinical faculty members by attending three mini-workshops on the following topics: coaching and mentoring, teaching for critical thinking, and culturally responsive teaching. By increasing enrollment in these workshops, we'll be able to house these mini-workshops here in the district going forward, and that's certainly our goal to do this school year. I'd also please report that we had a successful new teacher orientation just a week ago, on the dates of August 27th and 28th at Copeland Middle School in the media center. To share some results from the surveys that were submitted by those who participated, on the question of "Am I satisfied with these sessions?", ninety-five percent of those who responded agreed strongly that they were satisfied. On the question of "Were the materials as engaging and useful?", again, ninety-five percent agreed, strongly agreed, into that question. And on the question of the topics, "Were they well-planned and interactive?", one hundred percent of the participants agreed or strongly agreed that the session was well-planned. Presented on the question of whether or not the presenters were effective, again, one hundred percent agreed or strongly agreed. And lastly, on the question of whether the atmosphere was enthusiastic, interesting, and conducive to collegial professional exchange, ninety-five percent of the participants either agreed or strongly agreed to that question. All that being said, I think we had a very successful new teacher orientation based on the feedback we received. I'd also like to share some information about, that I've learned recently about the LEEDs program, in doing some research and determining what are the proper ways we should think about providing appropriate education to our children, our students, around issues related to substance abuse. This past week, I met with a representative from the LEED program to learn more about their curriculum, and ways we might explore how we could pursue a partnership, and what that might look like. What I've learned about the LEED program is that it utilizes both social and emotional learning to work through fun and interactive lessons, building the self-confidence that young people need to make healthy choices and to achieve success, and to promote positive pro-social attitudes and behaviors, while also fostering healthy relationships. Each of the programs feature fully scripted lessons, age-appropriate material, as well as assessment and evaluation materials. And I'm pleased to report that for next steps, I'll be meeting with the police chief to determine the amount of time we may be able to offer support with LEED officers, and to determine what and how to dedicate that instruction in our district. We may also need to determine which grades we might want to implement this program, and which curriculum to integrate the program with. These are questions that we'll be pursuing and answering the coming months in a highly transparent collaborative way. Next, I'm pleased to share with the community that as a new interim assistant superintendent, I've shared with our staff and internal stakeholders that it's my priority to ensure I'm listening to our educators. And so to that point, I've made a commitment to spend one full day at each of our schools in the month of September, more specifically. I'll be spending a full day at Burtwood this Friday on the 7th. I'll be at Copeland on the 13th. I'll be at Catherine Dwyer on the 14th. Dennis O'Brien on the 17th. Katie, KDM on 9/20, and Stoney Brook on 9/21. It's my intent to not only listen to the educators who I have the chance to interact with, but also to come back to this board, to the community, and report what I've heard and the general themes. Next, we'll be launching two initiatives in the coming weeks, two think-take initiatives. One to be focused on literacy instruction, and taking a step back to think about what our overall approach to literacy instruction is currently, and should be going forward. And the second will focus on character education, thinking about best practices in that area, and what we need to do to think about a strategic plan over a multi-year period, to ensure we're doing all we can to provide the highest quality of character education for our students. An update to a question that was already asked earlier, but to provide a bit more detail. Draft curriculum has already been submitted for our six to eight Gibson and Talented programs, our GNT programs here in Copeland. At the same time, we're also looking at revised curriculum rewrites for our GNT program, TRES program in grades three to five. In the coming months, we'll be able to present that to the board for consideration. That being said, I do want to reiterate that GNT services are being provided from grades three through eight in all of our schools this school year. And lastly, I'd like to provide an update regarding our eighth-grade biology class, which launches this year. I had an opportunity to meet with the teacher of our new eighth-grade biology classes. We have two sections we'll be offering to the eighth-grade students for this school year. The students were enrolled in these classes after taking both a placement test and a very stringent review of their grades. The teacher is currently using a ninth-grade curriculum, but translating that into an eighth-grade template in these upcoming weeks, which will again be submitted to our board committee for approval. The goal of this course, to be clear, is to position the students enrolled in this class to be able to consider possibly taking a physics course as freshmen, and even possibly an AP bio course as sophomores. The course may also position students so they may double up on science courses in the high school. So we're obviously very excited about this new initiative. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any board member have any questions? Dr. Tameya?
Actually, I do, about the, they're modifying it for an eighth-grade template. Wouldn't they need that ninth-grade curriculum for the student talent as a class in high school? So they cover all the information?
They do.
Would it be modified?
We do need the ninth-grade curriculum, so I do want to reiterate that that is the starting point. And meeting with the teacher, given this is the first year we're launching the class, as she's teaching that class, as in any good instruction, you're learning from how the students are interacting with that class. So, while the content needs to be at the ninth-grade level, we may discover some emotional, social-emotional needs more appropriate for eighth graders that maybe ninth graders aren't necessarily struggling with. That, we want that to be documented, as she's teaching the curriculum on a live basis, if you would. And so my, this conversation with her, or to share with her tools to help document that and translate that ninth-grade curriculum in ways that are more age-appropriate, if you would, for eighth graders, as we go through this first year.
So that, would that be ongoing, that you would be responsive to each class taking it?
The eighth-grade class, the biology class? Yes, we want to, given this is a first-year launch, we want to monitor how our students are experiencing the curriculum, how the teacher is assessing their learning on a regular basis throughout this year. And she's pledged to work very collaboratively with myself, with leaders in the district, to share her reflections, but also the curriculum that she's writing, as she's experiencing the students' learning.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, then, moving on for board action. First section is personnel. It begins on page four, it ends on page five. Per law, there will be no public discussion. Discussion was had amongst board members in executive session. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Chabala?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico?
Too many chills.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabala?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes. Moving on to HIV determination.
There are no investigations.
Okay, no investigations, move on then to the R.C., education, which begins on page five, and I believe it ends on page five, more or less. There's one item. May I have a motion, please?
No move.
Mrs. Mezak and second, Mrs. Cherico? Board discussion. If anyone from the public would like to make a comment about this item, I can open it up. If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabala?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes. Moving on to special education, there are no motions? I'm sorry, yes, there are none. Moving on to E, administration, it begins on page nine. It carries over to, I'm sorry, page six, it carries over to page seven. May I have a motion, please?
No move.
Mrs. Brooks? Mrs. Maluzan? Board discussion. There is no board discussion, I can open up to the public if someone has a question about administration. If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabala?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes. Moving on to finance, it begins on page seven, it carries over to page eight. May I have a motion, please?
No move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Maluzan? Board discussion on finance. If not, I can open it up to the public if anyone has a question about finance. If not, then may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabala?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellbord?
Yes.
Mrs. Maluzan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes. Policy, there is none. I know I skipped over the section earlier about committee reports. We had a board meeting last week, and between last week and this week, there were no committee reports, to my knowledge, which is why I skipped it. I do believe policy has a date coming up?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, and I do believe the education committee is meeting this week, like tomorrow. Okay. Moving on then to old business. Is there any old business? May I have a motion, please, to open it to old business? Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherico? Old business. No business?
I have none.
Okay.
There was a concern from the community regarding vegetation surrounding the pond, and whether or not that had been culled too aggressively. That is an area that we do work with environmental protection around, and there is permission for the school district to cut that back to a four-foot length. However, this summer, it was cut back to a three-foot length because the service that we use indicated that some of the vegetation was sick, and it needed to be further pruned down in order to maintain the health of that. There's also been some trees around the property around us that have been removed, but none of those were removed by the school district. Any trees that have been removed have all been done by the power company, which we don't have any jurisdiction over. So I just wanted to provide some clarity around that particular item.
Thank you. I did have old business, I forgot to chime in here. Towards the end of last school year, and perhaps Mr. Adams, you could shed some, fill in the blanks for me. We had two young ladies who approached the board, who were working on a Girl Scout project that entailed Stop the Bleed, and they were on a, on a project to try and outfit our schools with Stop the Bleed kits, and were going to then try to garner enough funds to do that. The board unfortunately cannot just give money that way, it has to be budgeted for. And so what we did was, we asked the girls, and I want to know where we stand with that, we asked the girls to see what they could do, in terms of getting the funds to do this, and that going forward, if they were short funds, it would be a consideration for our budget for the following year, which we wouldn't start working on until now, anyway. I forget the exact amount of dollars they were looking for. And I know, Mr. Adams, they were going to be working with you as well at the school. So, I'm putting you on the spot, but perhaps you can bring us up to date on that?
I've recently talked to Daniel from Visions Federal Credit Union, who's going to be sponsoring a grant program that will be rolling out in the next few weeks. Try, where federal, if you open up an account with Visions, they will give $25 to the person opening the account, and then $25 will go towards the Stop the Bleed program. So, we're looking forward to getting all the materials out to the community very soon.
Got it.
Five thousand.
Up to five?
Five thousand, yeah.
Thank you. If we can perhaps track down the young ladies to find out where they have, what they've accomplished to this point, so we know going forward if the board will be considering to put any more funds into the budget. So I'm not sure, Mrs. Palmer, if you have record? I know one of the girls, I don't know the other. But perhaps we can reach out to them and get a report. Thank you. Okay, your business, sorry.
It can be, or new business, but...
Oh, good, new business, okay.
Okay, we'll keep it as new business. On the Board of Ed website, there are several items that are either outdated that I think we need to look at to make sure that we have the most updated information. One of which is the goals. We have last year's goals, and if we can get this year's goals on the Board of Ed, as well as presentations, so since we now have a calendar for Board of Ed presentations, it would be great to also have those presentations updated on the website. So if anyone missed the live presentation, then they can go back and review the presentation on the Board of Ed website. There may be other things, I know Mrs. Brooks brought to my attention some things that were on the app that might be outdated, that's on the specific Board of Ed, when the... some things that were on the app that might be outdated that's on a specific Board of Ed webpage. So I'm assuming it's the board secretary updates the Board of Ed website? I don't know.
We're working on the website. There's actually quite a bit of information that requires an overhaul. And so we're looking at all different areas to make sure that that's brought up to current state very quickly. In some cases, some of the departments have information that's several years old. So that will be updated. It's a good opportunity to also mention that as of this week, we have a district Facebook, which we're excited about. And we'll be putting out an announcement to the community before the end of the week on how to access that, but certainly in preparation, not only for this school year, but also for the unveiling of our new website, which is scheduled for January. We want to make sure that we cull through all the information and make sure that that is in really good shape to migrate over into our new format in January so that the community is seeing, not only able to find information, but obviously finding accurate and current information. Directory information in particular is an area that we'll be working on.
Thank you. Speaking of directory, can I ask for an update on the phone system? Because last we talked, they were working on it last week, so where are we now?
To be honest, I have not discussed it with Chris Greber since last week. So I think it's on schedule, I believe, that's all I know.
So parents are still able, though, to, if the extensions are correct, get to a teacher via phone if necessary?
I believe so. I'm pretty nice, I don't know.
All the phones are functional in the school. They can reach both incoming and outgoing calls. All that functionality is there. I know that Mr. Greber, even though there's been, the timeline is, as it typically happens, is a little bit extended beyond what we had hoped for. I know that he believes that this will certainly occur by mid-September. We should be in good shape. It's in the buildings, I know the equipment is there. And building at a time, they are beginning to put that all together.
Thank you. Any other business on older news slash news, since we merged them from the board? Okay, if anyone from the public wishes to address the board on any item of concern, question, I can open it up to the public at this time. Okay, so let me open up to the public first, one second. May I have a motion, please? Mrs. Cherico, Mrs. Brooks? I'm on.
Hi, I'm Larissa Smith, 124 Mountain Road in Rockaway. And I don't have a concern or question, but I wanted to share something that went along with it being Suicide Prevention Month. I actually located something recently on the NJPTA.org website. It's a free webinar for parents and caregivers, and I'll forward it over to all of you. It will be taking place on Friday, September 14th, at 12 o'clock. However, if you're not able to view it live, they will send you the webinar when you register and get it all for free. So I figured that might be something that we might want to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Now may I have a motion to close to the public? Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Malouzak? With that, before we adjourn, the Board of Education will be returning to executive session for personnel. We will not return to public, there'll be no motion for action taken, I should say. We thank you for coming, we look forward to seeing you again at our meeting the last week of September. It'll be a few weeks from now, thank you so much.